So it is 6:00 PM. Welcome to the CMCSS formal board meeting, Millard House. Looks like we have a full board room today. So I'm glad to see as many faces on the screen. Just an FYI, as we know with some of the virtual meeting platforms that are out there, there have been some security issues so that we don't suffer from any of those issues. I do ask that you share your video so that we know who's in the space moving forward before we actually get started. Welcome to any of our visitors, especially our student visitors. We're looking forward to celebrating you all here in just a little bit. With that said, Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and let you get started with the meeting.
It is 6 o'clock in this session of the Clarksville Montgomery County School Board is called to order. We ask that you first pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, please silence all other electronic devices in your vicinity. We will not ask for an oral district attendance call because we see 100% board member attendance and because we are required to call roll for two separate votes this evening. The first item on the agenda is the Point of Pride Awards, Mr. House.
Yes ma'am, I'm actually gonna turn things over to our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Sean Imperatris. As I indicated when we got started, I'm always excited to celebrate the accomplishments of our students and our schools. So at this time, we definitely have some wonderful opportunities to share with the board and the community. Dr. Imperatris.
Mr. House and Clarksville Montgomery County School Board, CMCSS students have garnered some amazing accomplishments this spring. Firstly, hats off to the first place winners in the Tennessee National History Day from Northeast High School, receiving first place in the Senior Group Exhibit of Advanced Students, our seniors Kennedy Boyd and Shailen Matlock for their presentation, "All Power to the People, the Black Panther Party Breaking the Barriers of Social Justice." The two will participate virtually in the National History Day ceremony. Next, please congratulate Rossview High Senior Charlotte G. Lang, who is one of 14 Tennessee high school semifinalists in the 2020 U.S. Presidential Scholars Program. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. In 1979, the program was extended to recognize students who demonstrated exceptional talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was again extended to recognize students who demonstrated ability and accomplishment in career and technical education fields. Each year, up to 161 students are named as Presidential Scholars, one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. Also, do many kudos in Rossview High Senior Emily Mays, one of 23 Tennessee high school students to be named as a 2020 National Merit Scholar. Emily was selected a Merit Scholar as a scholarship recipient of the National Merit Walgreen Company. Over 1.5 million juniors in approximately 21,000 high schools entered the 2020 National Merit Scholarship Program when they took the 2018 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, which served as the initial screening of the program entrance. In September 2019, some 16,000 semifinalists were designated on a state representational basis in numbers proportional to each state's percentage of the national total of graduating high school seniors. Semifinalists were the highest-scoring program entrants in each state and represented less than 1% of the nation's seniors. More bragging rise can be claimed from having four CMCSS high schools earning honors at Best High School in U.S. News &amp; World Reports 2020 Best High School Rankings published in late April. Receiving the recognition are Rossview High, Clarksville High, Montgomery Central High, and Northwest High. Schools are ranked on their performance on state-required tests, graduation, and how well they prepare students for college. Now, let me celebrate the STEM Academy at Kenwood High School, which is one of 22 schools in Tennessee to receive the Tennessee Department of Education and the Tennessee STEM Innovation Network STEM School Designation for 2020. The school was awarded for its commitment to promoting and integrating STEM learning for all students that ultimately prepares them for post-secondary college and career success in the 21st century. Since 2018, 48 K through 12 schools in Tennessee have earned a designation, including Carmel Elementary and more Magnet Elementary Schools in previous years. Each school awarded the designation was evaluated through a rigorous application process, including a self-evaluation, interviews, and hosting site visits with the Tennessee STEM Designation Review Team. At this time, I'd like to hand it over to Jessica Harris to talk about Elementary Point of Pride.
Jessica, I think you may be on mute.
Sorry, let me try that again. I am so excited about this last award. As a former principal of Bern Starden Elementary School, I would like to recognize Dallas Hawkins, who was one of three students in the state to earn the Dale R. Hughes Leadership Award through the National Junior Beta Club. She represents Middle Tennessee, receiving a scholarship to attend the Leadership Camp in Greenville, Tennessee in July, paid for by the Tennessee Council for Junior Beta. Congratulations, so proud of her. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica, and thank you, Dr. Imperatris both, and thank each of you in terms of our students that have worked extremely hard throughout the school year to have this deserving opportunity to be recognized with our community, our board, our media, and other visitors that are on the call. Parents, if you're listening in the background, you should be proud. Principals that are on the call as well, you all should be proud. Thank you for your hard work. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan, do we have requests to address the board tonight?
There are no requests tonight.
Thank you. The next agenda item is approval of a consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed?
I move that consent agenda be approved as listed.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. Do we have a second?
A second.
Is that Ms. Martha?
Carol Berry.
Carol Berry, okay, thank you. It's been moved in second for approval. Is there further discussion? We will now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of the consent agenda. District 1, Carol Berry?
Yes.
District 2 is Margaret Pace, yes. District 3, Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
District 4, Ann Martha?
Yes.
District 5, Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
District 6, Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
And District 7, Josh Baggett?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0. The next agenda item is policy monitoring. Mr. House, considering the constraints of a virtual board meeting with oral voting, would you prefer we both vote on both simultaneously, both ELs, as we did with the seven consent agenda items? Or do you want to vote each EL separately?
I would defer to General Counsel Mark Nolan in reference to an answer here. Mark?
We can vote on them together unless any of the board wants a separate vote.
And we can address that in the discussion then. Thank you. Mr. House?
I will just add, for those of you that were in the meeting specifically for the Point of Pride, we generally pause for about 60 seconds and give people the opportunity to stay or go. So this is that opportunity. Please don't feel like you are obligated to stay in the meeting. You're more than welcome to, but you're also more than welcome to head out. Madam Chair, as you indicated, we do have two executive limitations. Executive Limitation 5, which is financial administration, is the first one that I will cover, and then I'll cover Executive Limitation 13. Executive Limitation 5 has 12 compliance expectations to ensure that the Director of Schools shall not cause nor allow physical jeopardy or material deviation from the annual budget or budget policies adopted by the board. All revenues are scheduled to be spent in accordance with the approved budget. No funds have been borrowed to date for the current fiscal year without authorization, nor have funds been expended from the fund balance without authorization. The actual ending fund balance will be greater than 3% based on current levels of revenue and expenditures. Payrolls are processed per the published calendar. All other obligations are paid in a timely manner. Purchases are made consistent with the state and district procurement codes. Sufficient internal controls are in place as documented in the annual fiscal audits. In addition, all board accounts are audited annually by the State Comptroller's Office. Likewise, individual school accounts are audited per a contract with certified public accountants. Updates regarding revenue collections, rising costs, capital projects are provided as appropriate to the board through work sessions. To conclude, any proposed changes to the budget are approved by the board and the county commission, and quarterly financial reports are provided to the board and county commission as well. Madam Chair, that concludes Executive Limitation 5, and I'll move to Executive Limitation 13 since Mr. Nolan indicated we can vote on both of them. You'll find this executive limitation in your packet as well. This limitation has three compliance expectations, which are to ensure that the Director of Schools shall not fail to develop high-quality high-school career technical programs. Specifically, CMCSS has reviewed local, regional, state, and national job markets to determine if our current programs are meeting the needs of students and preparing them for the current and future job market. Your board packet reflects CTE advisory meeting dates, as well as the Career Focus Academies that are in their seventh year of implementation, and information regarding our STEM and career exploration days are there as well. I'm also very excited that the Academy of Teaching and Learning at West Creek High School opened its doors for its first cohort students in August of 2019. Our instruction team has explained its work with the early technical college, culinary arts, food science, and fire science management programs to study. Students are also offered many dual enrollment opportunities and industry certification options as well. CMCSS instructions, the instruction team has collaborated with other agencies and funding resources to allocate funds to support effective career technical education programs. One such funding source is the Carl Perkins Entitlement Grant, which is in your packet as well. Finally, we will continue to study our five-year plan. Of course, this plan will adjust the curriculum offerings as the job market trends change. Madam Chair, that does conclude both executive limitations this evening.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve EL 5 and EL 13 as presented?
This is Charlie. So move, Madam Chair.
Mr. Patterson, thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Garland?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Garland. It's been moved in second for approval. Is there further discussion? We'll now vote with a yes or no roll call for approval of EL 5 and EL 13. Carol Berry?
Yes.
Margaret Pace is yes. Herbert Nelson?
Yes.
Ann Martha?
Yes.
Jimmy Garland?
Yes.
Charlie Patterson?
Yes.
And Josh Baggett?
Yes.
Motion passes 7 to 0. The next agenda item is reports. Mr. House?
Yes ma'am, we have two reports this evening, Madam Chair. The first of such is Goal Number 10, which is to refine student services, our Student Services Department processes. So at this time, I'd like to turn things over to our Chief of Staff, who supervises our Student Services Department, Dr. Angela Huff.
Thank you. Good evening, Board and Mr. House. This evening, like Mr. House said, I am sharing Goal 10, Refine Student Services Department Processes. Next slide, please. This next slide reflects the Student Services functions that occur. Everything that's under the umbrella are all the functions that the Student Services Department handles. So the slides that you are about to see in this presentation will explain the functions of Student Services, and throughout the presentation, you will not only understand the work that goes on, but you will see how the department navigates within each function. Next slide. Beginning with attendance. The compulsory attendance law changed in 2018-2019 school year, and it drastically changed requiring school districts to follow new protocols, such as requiring staff to meet with parents and students and sign an attendance contract. Also, school staff works with attendance teachers for any attendance concerns to follow up with families, and services are also offered to students and families to encourage attendance, such as Parenting Strategies classes, Rise Up Academy, and Truancy Intervention classes. On this slide here, it shows the training that we did with our staff members to make sure that they truly understood what the requirements were for the compulsory attendance law. Next slide, please. This next slide shares the truancy petitions that we have filed over the last two years and the petitions that have been heard in the Montgomery County Juvenile Court. And these are petitions when students have not been attending school, and it's been on a consistent basis, the attendance teacher have to file these petitions. Next slide. Another function of the Student Services Department that comes under that umbrella are also the discipline, things that occur, any remandments to alternative school, any hearing authority hearings, the appeals to the Director of Schools, appeals to school board, any zero tolerance expulsions, and our base remandments. And those are the numbers for the last two years. Next slide. Another function of the Student Services Department is Student Services also reviews any requests for foreign exchange students to come into our district, and that's one of our policies that we have in our system. And the Student Services Department coordinates all of these requests. The next slide reflects the number of students that we've had participate over the last two years in the foreign exchange program and that have come to our high schools. Next slide. Another function of Student Services is homebound. Our homebound services are needed for those students who are unable to attend the regular school setting, and we have homebound teachers that meet with those students to be able to go through their curriculum to make sure that they do not lose any time within our curriculum. The next slide reflects the numbers of students that we've served over the last two years with homebound services, be it regular ed students, special ed students, special education students that are in the Montgomery County Jail, and elementary remandments or IP placements for homebound. Next slide. Student Services also handles our homeschool options for parents. Parents can register through Student Services Department if they're interested in homeschooling their children, and the Student Services Department also completes a report for the Tennessee Department of Education twice per school year, indicating the numbers of students that we have that are registered for homeschool. The next slide will reflect those numbers over the last two school years for independent homeschool, church-related homeschool, and non-public school requests. Another function is zoning. All students, as you know, that attend our schools must maintain primary residence with a parent or legal guardian in a valid address within Montgomery County. And so the chart below lists the numbers of referrals that the Student Services Department has had to handle regarding students where there's a question if they live within our attendance zones or not. Next slide, please. This is our juvenile justice tracking information. Student Services provides information to our juvenile detention centers about classes in which students are enrolled and they can earn credit and those credits that are needed to graduate. And so these numbers here for the last two years reflect those students that have been tracked through our juvenile detention centers. And yes, both numbers are the same for both years, 112. All right, next slide, please. So the focus of future work for our Student Services Department is development of an online truancy intervention class for parents, also offering truancy intervention classes within the Student Services Department coordinated by our attendance teachers. And then the last focus would be the Continuous Improvement Team that we started this past year, and that team is focused on truancy restorative practices. Next slide. Another function of the Student Services Department is our Enrollment Center. As you know, we opened that Enrollment Center in June, and that's where parents can come and pre-enroll online and complete the process at the Enrollment Center, and then also providing the documents needed to validate that enrollment package. The next slide shares the numbers that we've had within the Enrollment Center. Since opening in June, our foot traffic has been 5,531 visits, and that number is broken down with the number of records requests, the actual enrollments, and the actual persons just coming to ask questions from Student Services Department personnel. The second bullet are the number of students that have been imported from online pre-enrollment. So if parents have gone online to pre-enroll, that number, 4,914, reflects that number and that those students were uploaded into Power School. And of that 4,914, 1,059 of those students are military-connected students. Next slide, please. Focus of the future work for the Enrollment Center would be to research a system to request and maintain high-school students' previous records prior to the beginning of school year, also to coordinate with the ELL Department with assessment of our non-English-speaking students. And the last is to begin discussions for a satellite enrollment center to better serve our increasing numbers. Next slide. The last function of our Student Services Department is the Record Center. The Record Center also relocated to Greenwood in June, and the Record Center maintains records for former Clarksville Montgomery County School students and provides transcripts to individuals, employers, and colleges. The Record Center also does verifications for rehabilitation, disability determination, child support, and prospective employers' requests. Next slide. In addition, the Record Center also coordinates for school personnel concerning activities relating student records with subpoenas, testing, special education records. The Record Center also works with military personnel, as well as responsible for maintaining and the accountability of all pertinent documentation in our student cumulative files. And the number of transcripts and verifications that have been processed from June up till April was 6,475 requests. Next slide, please. In addition, for future work for records to better serve the public, the goal is to have all of our inactive records and all rolling files moved to Greenwood. And also, on average, we have about 155,000 records, and some of those records were moved last year, and the other ones will be moved this year, that 30,000, and then we'll have about 75,000 remaining to be moved. We have 21 rolling files, and those rolling files, second set of those rolling files will be moved this week, and then the latter seven will be moved at a later date. So our summary for Student Services Department, our goal is just to make sure that we continue to provide any information and also ongoing assistance to our parents, students, and our community agencies to just support any requested need that is provided to us. Are there any questions?
Yes ma'am, Dr. This is Charlie Patterson.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, back to the truancy, about the third slide down from the very beginning. And I realize that we didn't go to school in April and May, but is there, it just seems like there's a big difference between the petitions filed in 1819 and this year, and also the petitions heard in the juvenile court this year versus last year. And again, I realize that April and May has not been included in that or would not be. But is there a certain pattern or reason why that would be such a big difference this year?
Yes, so the numbers for 2018-2019 also can reflect sometimes in those numbers, numbers from the preceding year. Sometimes when parents go into the juvenile court, for example, they can come in and bring information for one item that the judge may be requesting, but then the judge may send them home to bring back other information, so then another hearing is scheduled, and so sometimes that number can be for the same family, but they're bringing in different items on different dates. So that's why you will probably see a higher number for the 2018-2019 school year.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Dr. Huff.
Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, at this time, we'll move to Goal Number 13, which is to improve organizational efficiency through technology in our strategic work for the 2019-2020 school year. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our Chief Technology Officer, Mr. David Holman. David, I think you're on mute.
Doctor Huff? I apologize, I'm switching screens trying to get the second presentation loaded. I believe it's now loaded.
We're not seeing it as of yet.
About now.
There it is.
Okay, um, give me a second here. So throughout the technology department, our strategic work quite often involves other organizations. So the technology department really is a service department. We look for ways to utilize technology in a, basically in a way that would either save the district time or money, or ways that would improve overall efficiency. Joe Williams and I will go through and touch on a few of the many projects that we're currently working on within the district. So let's begin with the instruction department.
Absolutely. So the first thing you'll see there is the redesign of the online enrollment site. Of course, we've been accepting online enrollments for a number of years now, but Dr. Huff spoke of the Enrollment Center at Greenwood, which has taken this process and this resource for our families to a new level. We've got a year of experience, as she mentioned, under our belts on that, and through her leadership, we've been able to get some feedback, both from her group there and from the representative each school. So we're looking at both an aesthetic upgrade and a functionality upgrade to improve the parent experience on that and to make a more clear workflow from the Enrollment Center to the schools. The second one there, the development and implementation of the counselor referral site aligns with the district's focus on the social and emotional needs of the child. A staff member, a fellow student, or the student themselves can make a self-referral for a need that reaches out and establishes that initial contact to the school counselor, making available, again, the resources at that school for that child. You see some things that we have on the horizon there, a similar referral site for the behavioral consultants, and also research into esports. That was something that we had undertaken already, and of course, with the situations in schools across the nation, it's kind of at a hiatus, but we had reached out previously to schools both locally and nationally who have had a successful implementation of an esports program, and we're looking forward to picking that back up and seeing how that would benefit the students of CMCSS. For the Communications Department, one of the programmers established an online ordering system for the teacher warehouse. This both highlights that wonderful program for our school staff members and makes it easier for them to take advantage of the benefits there. Unfortunately, I think we were set to pilot that in the spring of this year. Again, circumstances have changed for us, but I believe that we're going to begin working with communications on a pilot project in the fall. And then the implementation of the school messenger system, that allows both district and school administration to reach out to parents and students, either dynamic groups or static groups for their school, for different programs, sharing messages both through email and through voicemail. That's a system that's That's a system that's certainly gotten some mileage recently with the vast changes and information we've shared through our recent months.
In the operations department, we're beginning a pilot of provision cameras. And we purchased approximately twenty-four of these systems for twenty-four buses. These were purchased through grant dollars. This would give us live video stream of what is going on within a bus. The system also adds an additional bus camera beyond what normally we put in a bus. And currently, we're getting, when we purchase these, we're purchasing these out of savings to what we've been purchasing in the past. So we're getting more for for less through this. We're also supporting some new software this year within the operations department. We changed out some software, and this is the first year of implementation on it. We went to a software that we use for bus zoning and for student zoning. It's called TransFinder. That also gave us the need to change out our GPS software. The two were tied together, and so we've gone to a software that is called Zonar. And we're again in the first year of that, and we use that for both diagnostic and for tracking of buses throughout the school system.
For the business affairs department, of course, I continued, excuse me, continued transition from paper forms to online forms. Business Fair has been very proactive in making suggestions and helping us identify these. Obviously, you have the printing cost and the paper costs for paper forms, but also the efficiency cost as they go through the workflow and different signatures. So this will be an ongoing process and will affect more than just business affairs, but something that we've been proud of our work on with them. The upgrade to our new version of Munis Financial and Doc Doc Origin software. Munis is the primary HR and financial software system, third party for the district. Future plans for those, this is something that's been on hiatus, but we're proud to be back on track with business affairs. The development of an online stipend pay site, stipend is very complex because of the grants. It can be funded through various resources, tracked in different ways. Again, this is something else that Business Fair has been proactive on and offered us some great solutions, working with their group, working with some from instructions, understanding the process, and working on this to bring this to fruition on an online platform. For human resources, recently developed job payer recruitment contact site to go along with some initiatives that they were putting into place on the front end of very simple form, just where a potential applicant, more specifically, probably a college graduate entering the teaching profession, would fill out a basic form with their name and contact information. That information we sent over to a representative in HR so that they can initiate the contact with that potential applicant as well as introduce them a little bit more to our district, help them through the application process, things like that. An upgrade to the online employee transfer system. We've had in place for a number of years, a system that allows certified employees to request transfers to other locations or other positions in the district, working with HR to expand that to our classified staff and our administrators as well. Future plans, been in contact, another complex system, FMLA tracking, the eligibility, the hours, working with the human resource department to understand that, to see if we can develop and offer an online system to help with that. And also the employee evaluations performed by supervisors, that's replacing a paper system for efficiencies purposes as well.
Last, from a general standpoint within the district, we have a replacement cycle for network equipment. So we, this keeps us up to date, enabling us to handle the growing volume of both devices and the added bandwidth and traffic demands that are on our network. There's also a constant and growing need for reporting to various state and federal agencies. And so we have people who are constantly redoing the reporting process and sending out that information electronically to the various agencies in one format or another. Also, there is a equipment situation within the district, and when it comes to that, we use a refresh cycle. The refresh cycle helps us determine which equipment is needed to be replaced or upgraded. Now, that refresh cycle can be anywhere from four years to as much as ten years, depending on the equipment. And the last thing that we've, we wanted to highlight today was the implementation of ClassLink. And ClassLink was put in last year. It's a single sign-on that allows students and staff to actually sign on to their computer and then go to a webpage and then just pick a particular program that they need to go to, and it will automatically sign them in. This helps facilitate and increase the the speed at which that happens for schools and for employees so that when they go in, they're not constantly signing into the next system that they have to get into. That's handled through Active Directory on the backend, and it is a quicker and more efficient way to to go about it. Questions that I could take?
Can you tell me a little bit more about the esports?
From, well, we we actually began the process in the spring. We began looking at esports and the ability to launch that maybe particularly in high schools, maybe down to the middle schools. We were working with a number of districts to see the programs that had already been implemented. We have done a lot of research on this, and we believe it's the proper way to go. There are some students that will never participate in a regular sport, but they have found in other school districts that when they participate in esports, they're more attentive and their grades actually improve. These are a select group of individuals. But we've also noticed that over the last year, this year alone, there was fourteen million dollars in grants is the wrong word. I can see it, Sean.
Scholarships.
Scholarships, thank you. My brain went blank. There's four, there was fourteen million dollars alone this year in scholarships to colleges for esports. It's become very big at most of the colleges, and as it continues to expand, we believe that it's an important addition to our schools.
And we actually started studying this quite some time ago. David took the lead on it and reached out to two of the best school systems in the country, Long Beach Unified, as well as another one in Florida, if I'm not mistaken, that were doing this work extremely well. So we've had, you know, some navigators along the way that have assisted in in this journey. Something that we're really excited about.
Thank you.
Mr. House?
Yes, sir.
This has nothing to do with this presentation, but in case though, there's a we have to extend the stay-at-home to be educated. All of our high school students and all of our middle school students do have computers, right?
That is correct.
Okay, now what are we going to do for our elementary kids if we have to do this? I'm not, you know, if you don't have an answer now, that's fine. But that's something that I I've been thinking about, and I'd like for some some time when you get a chance to point that to us.
Sure, and I'm actually going to talk a little bit about that in my my director's report. But we do have enough one-to-one technology to to send home to our elementary school students if we get to that point, just to answer your your question. They are currently not in homes, and it's not a part of our one-to-one at-home strategy. But we, again, do have enough current technology within the school system that if we went a hundred percent one-to-one, K through twelve, we do have the the capacity to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. And Madam Chair, I believe that is the end of goal thirteen. Thank you, Mr. Holman.
Thank you for the presentations. Comments from Fort Campbell School Liaison Officer?
Nothing to share at this time.
Thank you. Comments from county commissioners?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Comments from board members? And again, I'd like to thank the CNCS leadership and all of the CNCSs employees for their dedication in moving so quickly and implementing the new techniques and moving in different directions to best meet the needs of our students during these unusual, demanding times. Your commitments, your efforts are sincerely appreciated. Other board members?
Yeah, I I think this is Ms. Shelton's last meeting with us, is it not?
I was going to share that in my report as well.
Oh.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Shelton, for all you've done for us. I appreciate it and hope you enjoy it. Wish you nothing but the best.
Ditto. Here, here.
She's right above you, Mr. Baggett, and and she blew, she did something special. So I'm going to say we appreciate you too, Ms. Shelton, but I did special.
The next agenda item is the director of schools report, Mr. House.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. The first thing I'd like to do, I think we still have a, if I'm not mistaken, a Dallas, are you still on the call? I don't think, there she is. We still have a superstar on the call that came on, I think, just a little bit late. And I wanted to recognize Dallas because she is just that, she's a superstar. She, of course, received the the Beta Leadership Club Award. And Dallas, we just want you to know that we're so proud of you and all the work. It's funny, because this exact same award, my daughter received when she was in fifth grade. And I know the work that goes into that. I know the kind of personality that goes into that. So mommy, I know you have a leader at home as well.
I'm so proud of her.
Congratulations, congratulations. We're going to all give you a hand at this time.
Thank you, guys.
Awesome. You have a good one.
Thank you.
Take care. So the first item I have in reference to my report is is just an update on the governor's executive order for virtual meetings. As you all know, the governor did have a time limit on that that was supposed to end on May the eighteenth. That has been extended until June the thirtieth. So our next board meeting will be June second, and we will move forward and do that board meeting as we're doing this evening virtually on Zoom. And I will remind us that if you, if you're new to the to the meeting and you haven't shared video for for virtual security purposes, we ask that you share video. You are subject to being dropped from the meeting. The second item that I will mention has to do with our central office reopening. Beginning May the twenty-sixth, our central offices at Gracie will open to the public by appointment only, on Tuesdays and Thursdays only, and we're going to operate between ten and two P M. Info will go out specifically tomorrow to to our employees and then to the public thereafter. So I just wanted you all to be aware that we are encouraged about getting back into the office. A number of us, it's pretty much everybody on this call that that works at the district office at Gracie has been into the office at least two to three times a week, getting business done. The next item has to do with the communicable disease team. As you all know, this is the team that has really, since COVID nineteen kicked off, has has really focused its efforts on modifications, changes throughout the school district. Well, this team, the communicable disease team, will be shifting its work and will be adding a a name to the team. So it'll be the communicable disease and reopening team. So the focus of this team is going to be exactly what it's going to look like as a school system for us in August. And that means several different things. That goes back to one of the things that you meant, you said, Jimmy, earlier. You know, everything from how we're going to operate the school district. What will it look like in the future? And that's going to take us specifically taking a constant look at data, listening to the health professionals, making sure that we take a look at every idea that's out there. Some of those ideas may be good ideas, some of them may be bad ideas, but we're going to vet them all. What I can share with you now is a part of a part of this work that's connected to the CARES Act. We will be doing a study as well. That study is going to be focused on a couple of different things. One is, you know, what would it look like for us two years from now? Because we want to study it for a year, and I want to make that clear. What would it look like for CMCSS to possibly study a four-track year-round school system? Again, I want to want to make sure that we're clear that this is not something that we're doing at the start of the school year. We'll study it for a year. One of the things that we want to make sure that we're doing is taking a look at the learning loss that many of our students may suffer over the course of this five months. The pandemic that that happened and then the two months in the summer. It's a lot of learning loss that that will happen. So we'll be looking at whether we need to be one, one-to-one. We'll be looking at, you know, whether we need to focus our efforts on a four-track year-round school. And those of you that are familiar or may not be familiar with four-track, it does two things. It helps students to recover learning loss. And it also helps an organization like CMCSS that's struggling with space. So this is something that we will study. We'll we'll bring on a consultant to help us with this as well. On top of the reopening work that we're doing, we're working with the advocacy organization SCORE. And SCORE is really interested in working with a couple significant foundations, nation, national foundations to really take a look at possibly creating a COVID nineteen recovery playbook. So my instruction department, along with myself, will be working with SCORE to take a close look at at what this, what this playbook will look like. We have meetings planned throughout the summer, and we expect to come out on the backend with a, an amiable work plan that can not only help CMCSS, but also help other school districts across the country. Now, specifically with CARES Act dollars, we will be going into the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year specifically with plans of providing after-school programs essentially at every one of our school buildings. So this is not something that we're studying, this is something that we're doing. So not only will we, will be, will we be providing after-school programs at each one of our schools and this coming fall, we'll also be providing transportation. We know that's a big part of of ensuring that students get what they need moving forward. So we're excited about ensuring that we do start to chop into this learning loss. What we do know and what the research tells us, with a learning loss as as large as we'll be, that our students will be looking at, it has to be looked beyond just the next school year. It's a two-to-three-year process that we have to focus on, and we want to ensure that we do the necessary diligence, due diligence with our with our families and our students to ensure that they are exactly where they need to be. The next item that I'll mention has to do with our land acquisition committee. We did meet today, and due to the pandemic, it was really the first time that we met since late, late January. We did talk about a a proposal that that the land owner in question provided to us. After the meeting today, I did provide a copy of that proposal to everyone on the committee. So everybody will be reviewing that committee. Jim Summerall will actually be reaching back out to to that land owner to get some more specifics. We've gotten an overall price for the project. But what what the mayor would like to see and what the committee would like to see is individual pricing for specific pieces of this project. So we did take some steps forward today on the land acquisition committee, and we're looking forward to meeting again in the next couple of weeks. Child nutrition, wanted to mention that we're approaching the five hundred thousand meal mark in terms of serving, serving students. May twenty-second, which is the last calendar day of school for students, will be the last day that we feed. But I will add that CMCSS has worked with the city as well as some additional nonprofits to to hopefully move forward and continue feeding in some form or fashion. Right now, we're meeting at, feeding at twenty-three or so sites. We probably won't be feeding at twenty-three sites. We'll probably be cutting that more than half in partnership with these nonprofits and the city. So we're excited to continue to be a part of of that solution. We're also excited to partner with the other organizations that are a part of of the work that Jim Summerall is doing. work that Jim Summerall is doing and, and focusing on. Currently, as you know, there are thousands of laptops, as, as Mr. Garland mentioned, that are out there in students' hands. One of the things that we, we do have to do on an annual basis, annual basis is, is our collection. So that collection is actually happening this week. It's a monumental task, but it, it's happening in a, in a very organized manner. Mr. Garland, one of the pieces that we'll be focusing on during our, our planning over the course of the next weeks ahead is to determine, you know, whether online opportunities, which many of you may not realize that our early college at TCAD, students were actually on a platform already. So during their first half of the day, they were doing all of their classes online. So we have a great example out there already of what, what online, or schools' PLP, which is the name of the company, what they're doing. And, and we're looking to, to possibly expand that significantly moving forward in the future. So collections will happen, so we'll be bringing those computers back and deciding what that dissemination or providing of one-to-one will look like in the fall. Learning packets will continue to be provided to, to students for the next couple of weeks. I'm sure that I've mentioned that our food deliveries and learning packets actually happen together at our twenty-three sites. That will continue again until May the twenty-second. The last couple of things that I will mention, senior online graduation celebrations will be made available Thursday, March twenty-first, as well as in-person graduation dates. We've provided those to you, the public has seen those as well. We have dates for June, dates for July. We'll continue to watch the data to make sure that if we are to move forward with, with in-person graduations, that it's done in a safe manner. But we have backup plans in place that, that can be made available to our public if that time comes. The last thing that I'll mention that, that I think Charlie touched on earlier is that this is Elise's last meeting, and personally, personally, Elise, you know, you have been, I think you were the first person that I met when I came into, into the district, and, and you're going to be dearly, dearly missed in a, in a special way. So we, we look forward in some kind of COVID-19 way to celebrate you moving forward, but I just want you guys to know that I'm sure she came in with a bang and she's leaving with a bang, and she's leaving an incredible legacy, because I, I think Anthony's experience that, that he's had in working under her will allow us to continue to, to be great in, in our communications department. So Elise, from, from all of us to you, thank you. We're going to miss you, we love you.
Thanks.
We look forward to staying, staying in touch with you.
Absolutely, thank you all.
Job well done, job well done. Madam, Madam Chair, that does conclude my director's report.
On that sad note, thank you all for attending tonight's virtual board meeting. Our next formal school board meeting is scheduled for June the sixteenth. This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good one.
Good night.